The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of September 23rd, 2021 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting for a time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and roll call was taken. This meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Can I get a mover?
Mover.
Mr. Giordano.
Second.
Mr. Pavlak, please rise for a flag salute. And a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we need to repeat the roll call, Mr. Moffett. We have the same group. Dr. Tobek.
All right, so at this time, I'm going to do my administrative summary report. So I'd like to start my report by providing the community with news from across the school district. First of all, Randall Carter, on September 15th, Randall Carter's students exercised their creative side and met new friends from around the world, as well as a famous writer. With the celebration of International Dot Day, Ms. Riordan and Mrs. Maz's third graders were lucky enough to connect with New York Times bestselling author Peter H. Reynolds. Inspiring creativity, courage, and collaboration, the dot is about a caring teacher who encourages a student named Vashti to make her mark. Vashti couldn't draw, so she simply made a single dot on a piece of paper. This little dot was just the beginning of her journey of self-discovery. During the event, the third graders joined students from over 130 countries to ask questions and to learn about the writing process that Mr. Reynolds follows. The Week of Respect. All elementary school counselors will be facilitating Week of Respect activities during the week of October 4th. Theme days and activities will foster student cooperation, caring, and respect in a fun and engaging way. At Anthony Wayne, they started their annual One School, One Book initiative. This year, they're reading Wish Tree by Katharina Applegate. Next week, during the Week of Respect, counselors will provide grade-level lessons associated with respect and kindness. Along with our One School, One Book initiative, students will be asked to sign our No Place for Hate banner for the 2122 school year. At Scotta Colfax, students kicked off their first Spirit Day on the 17th, on National Day of Respect, and look forward to a busy month in October. Students and staff will recognize the Week of Respect with lessons on acceptance from the guidance department and phys ed teachers, as well as Spirit Days. And they also look forward to kick off a month of Pinkout recognition for breast cancer awareness. Thanks to the community and staff for a great start. At Wayne Hills, congratulations to sophomore Sophia Bradley, who was named North Jersey Soccer Player of the Week for September 7th to 11th. Also, congratulations to the Wayne Hills Band, which took first place in Group 3A at the Tournament of Bands in Jefferson. At Wayne Valley, the school counseling department is launching a first-ever lunch group called Earbuds. The group will focus on discussing school, social life, and other topics, and all students are welcome to attend. Everyone at Wayne Valley is also excited for the return of therapy dogs. After much success last year, Wayne Valley secured the therapy dogs for monthly visits. New Wayne Valley media specialist, Erica Foster, excuse me, created a steam area on the lower level of the library, filled with art supplies, makerspace projects, and Lego stations. Students have especially been enjoying the 3D doodle pens. The Wayne Valley Media Center will be holding a creation station competition, in which students can enter masterpieces that they have created in the library, such as 3D artwork, Lego creations, maker spaces, and more. The Wayne School's Auto Program, housed in both high schools, continues to involve local businesses. Lincoln of Wayne is now becoming a structured learning experience employee for our students, and they just recently hired their first Wayne Valley structured learning experience student to work in the parts department. Congratulations on this new partnership, and thank you to Lincoln of Wayne for your support for our students. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about our enrollment for this year. So although our official enrollment will not be collected for reporting purposes until October 15th, I would like to provide the Board of Ed with more information about our enrollment across the district. As of today, we have 7,509 students enrolled in our schools, including 489 students who are now enrolled in our full-day kindergarten program, plus we have 142 students in pre-chem. The district has 1,229 special education students and 148 students attending private schools for the disabled out of district. Tunis Day Elementary is the largest elementary school with 399 students. The largest middle school is Anthony Wayne with 649 students. Both high schools have almost the exact same enrollment, with 1,213 students at Wayne Hills and 1,210 at Wayne Valley. I'd like to talk a little bit about the vaccination status of our staff. Earlier this year, Governor Murphy signed an executive order requiring that all preschool to grade 12 school personnel to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 by October 18th, 2021, or be subject to COVID-19 testing. As we work to collect information in preparation to meet this executive order, we're happy to report that 1,340 staff members have responded so far to the survey, and although we need another 115 people to respond, 87% of the staff members that responded so far are vaccinated, while 153 are not. 14 have received only one dose, so by the deadline, they should have both, and six need to reload their evidence of vaccination. So our percentages are fairly high. I'd also like to take a moment to talk about two combined topics: transportation and school lunch. So as you may have read in the paper, we've experienced some difficulties with our transportation service, largely due to the driver shortage that exists in all areas, all segments of the transportation industry. The Wayne Township Public Schools continue to look for drivers, and the attention we recently received in the media has led to a dramatic increase in the number of people making inquiries about working as school bus drivers. So we're hopeful we'll be able to hire at least a few new drivers, and that's due to our presence in the media. Right now, by combining some routes and some stops, we're able to continue to staff our buses and complete all 295 daily transportation routes. The 295 routes does not include school shuttles, field trips, or athletic runs. The problem with the lack of drivers across all industries influences many things beyond the day-to-day transportation we offer to our students. A shortage of delivery drivers means that our food service vendor, Sedexo, is not receiving the food items they've ordered from Cisco, which is their primary food supplier. Competition from Amazon has led Cisco to a shortage of drivers. Cremaland Dairy does not have enough drivers, which means they're forced to reduce the number of deliveries per week. Processed foods are in short supply due to the shortage of workers to process the foods. Driver strikes and a shortage of drivers led to inconsistent delivery of fruits and vegetables. Also, our school district's order for Coca-Cola and Snapple products that was placed in August was never delivered and was recently canceled because of a lack of drivers. All of this means that our food service operation is operating and doing the best that they can, but parents should expect substitutions and other unexpected changes to the menu at the last minute. As far as the HIV report goes, I'm reporting the following data related to HIV. In the Wayne Township Public Schools for this period, there are zero incidents of HIV. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tobek. We're clearly facing some serious challenges throughout the district. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda, please.
Yes, we have a few here tonight. If you flip to item number T, emergent human resources, items 1 through 13, we're revising number three, approval of appointment of district staff. Number 10, Maria Martiano, is revised to PC number 11-40-12/ECI, which is a .5 to 11-40-12 EOI, which is the other half. Revised start date to September 24, 2021. On that same item, number three, we are going to remove 12, which is Lisa Ventola P-I-C-I-L-L-O. Item number four, approval of additional compensation under number three, six-period assignment. Delete line number three, which is Robert Glander, and we will be adding Margaret, and I'll spell the last name, Q-U-I-N-T-A-V-E-L-L-A, which is PE/Health, and that starts at September 13, 2021, until permanent teacher returns. $14,500 prorated, and that'll be charged against the count 11-140-100-101-15-00. Item number seven also will be revised, and that's the approval of revised items. And on line number five, Nora Allen, is revised hours on par assignment list to 5.00 hours. We will add a line again to item number seven, approval of revised items, which is line 10 we're adding, and that'll include in the first column Deborah B-R-I-G-I-D-A. Number two is Maria D-E-G-R-E-Z-I-A. Three, Lisa Hogan. Four, Karen K-A-R-C-H-B-O-S-K-I. Five, Phyllis L-A-P-A-G-L-I-A. And number six, Rosa Romano, CPAs at Pacanac. Second column will say revised hours from 2.5 to 3.0 effective September 13, 2021. On that line, I should say, we're adding line number 13 to item number seven, approval of revised items. That'll include approval to increase assignment, excuse me. Number one, Georgette L-O-F-F-R-E-D-O, I'm sorry, -Fleming, at 2.5 hours from 1:00 to 3:30 PM at JFK, from September 24, 2021 to October 15, 2021, at Step 9, which is $20.41 an hour. And that will conclude the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
I'll move it. Second.
Mr. Bartlett, I'm sorry, I have my mic at Bartlett. Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Bubba. Anyone? Agenda items only.
Madam President, seeing no one rise, I move to close.
Second.
Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Duffy. Okay, committees. Who'd like to go first? We'll start down that end. Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Ms. Kazan. Tonight, the Personnel Subcommittee met. I was chairing, along with Stacey Scher, Suzanne Putup. We also had Paula Clark and Donna Reichman attending also. We reviewed the personal committee minutes for August 19th. We also reviewed questions regarding human resource items on the 23rd's agenda. We discussed nurse staff related to COVID, and then we also looked at internal candidate for salary change. And that was it for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you. The Communications Committee met tonight, and attendants were Dr. Tobek, myself, Dawn Kumar, and Michael Bubba. We had an extensive discussion about recent district communication, of which there's been quite a bit, and the effectiveness of that communication now and in moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Pavlak.
The Facilities and Transportation Committee met yesterday. It was myself, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Blanchard, Mr. Skapitsky, and Mr. Moffett. We had a conversation about custodial pay, and with all the COVID protocols that are in place, we're looking at new ways of attracting part-time custodians. Our kindergarten furniture is all-in, except for a couple desks of the teachers due to delivery issues. We're hoping they will be here on October 1st. All the teachers do have desks. We had a rather lengthy discussion about the North Cove and the flooding issues, where our buses are. To be continued. We spoke about athletic facilities and a number of projects going on in our buildings right now. We also had a conversation, and there's been a lot of talk in the community, oh, we should air-conditioning all the schools. Well, we went out and we spoke to our architect, said, listen, give us a ballpark number on air-conditioning our schools. You're looking anywhere from 60 to 75 million to do all the schools. School opening was smooth. Transportation, we have, as Dr. Tobek said, we have reworked some routes. Major problem we're having with the buses is all the traffic congestion, because we have a lot of parents who are driving their children to school and not putting them on buses, so it's just adding to the normal traffic that we have in the schools. We are also looking at the possibility of going to electric buses. Transportation Department and Mr. Moffett are looking into this, we're looking into viability, but we also want to talk to other districts who have them for a length of time and see what the issues are. We also have to look at the infrastructure we have to see if it's capable of handling electric buses. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Anyone on this end? Have a report? Okay. Guess you're at the next meeting. All right, on to the agenda.
Madam President.
Mr. Pavlak.
I would move the entire agenda as one item.
I'll second.
Okay, it's Mr. Pavlak, moving the entire agenda, seconded by Mr. Duffy.
And your board agrees.
The Lord, yes. Any discussion on the agenda items? Anyone have anything to add, to ask? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese.
Yes.
Mr. Bubba.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar.
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak. Mrs. Putup.
Yes.
Mrs. Scher.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Putup, do you have a retirement to read?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have a retirement statement for Marian Barbera. Marian started as a substitute with the Wayne Township Public Schools in 1996. In September 1999, she joined Human Resources as an administrative assistant. Marian has an in-depth knowledge of the HR processes, and especially all the aspects of Board of Education agenda preparation. Marian shares her extensive experience with others and has helped to train many employees in the Human Resources Department. Marian is a constant source of wisdom and guidance. Marian also knows just about every employee and substitute by name and where he or she works. Marian has an amazing memory and has developed relationships with staff and administration throughout the district. In her retirement, Marian and her husband Paul plan to travel more to visit her children throughout the country. Her daughter Suzanne and granddaughter are in Minnesota, her daughter Kristen and four grandchildren in Colorado, her daughter Mallory and her two grandchildren in Rockaway, along with their spouses. Marian and Paul also hope to spend more time in Florida. We will miss all of Marian's knowledge and her work ethic. We thank her for her many, many years of service to the Wayne School system, and we wish her every happiness in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putup, and all the best to our retiree. Okay, this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
Move.
Mrs. Scher, Mrs. Putup. Come on down.
Good evening, Cindy Simon, Wayne. I actually just wanted to draw attention to something that I think you guys voted on last week, which was the renewal of the, I'm going to say the title wrong of this, the dual enrollment articulation agreements with some colleges that allow our high school students to get both high school and college credit. I just want to bring the attention to this because it's a really, really good thing to be doing. It helps parents with the cost of college. It helps students get ahead. It looks great on their resumes. It's great for scholarships. It's great for saving money. It's a little less pressure sometimes in an AP course, where you've got to pass that test at the end, and I just really encourage the district to do a better job of letting high school parents and students know these opportunities exist.
Hi, Ryan Batter shield, 63 Camaro Drive. I came two weeks ago about my daughter's first day, and I wanted to say that it was handled very well. I was very happy with the outcome. It was very fast, especially since we had a new counselor in the school. Another district counselor came along and helped him through that to ensure that that went well, and it was resolved very quickly and well, and I'm very appreciative of that. However, on the fourth day, my son came back with a mask rash all over his face, as per the doctor's notes that we expected to happen over that period of time. Luckily, only once so far. Still waiting for a call back from the district nurse from before the start of the school year that was promised to me at the time, and we haven't had. And in addition to that, later on, there was another mom who'd come back from Florida. There wasn't a lot of communication about the travel restrictions during that time until Dr. Pavlak, sorry, Dr. Tobek's letter that came out after all of that commotion. That led to a number of parents trying to figure out what was going on, led to some people asking in social media groups what the rules were and how things had gone, which led to somebody posting that back to the principal, and the principal reaching out to my wife and asking her not to communicate with other parents about this, which is not a great thing. It started very nice. It's like, hey, by the way, this has come across, you know, all of this kind of thing, and then implied that she was giving misinformation by asking other parents for information. I suggest that you ensure that those kind of comments that come out of the communication back to parents, if you're going to have people go in and look over the social media and things like that, which I think is fine, but you should ensure that those things aren't stopping parents from being able to create their own community and search for help amongst
Okay, start.
There is no sign in sheet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nicholas Stellioness is not going to give my address. This time, I am back because you already know my place on masks, clearly, and that I definitely gave my opinion on that last time, and this time, at least, Mrs. Kazan, you could be happy I won't be giving you what you called a brow-beating. And I will not be giving you a brow-beating, as you called it last time.
Thank you, Nicholas.
But one problem that a lot of kids came and talked to me about in school over the past few days is, this is for eighth graders, that we will not be going to Washington DC for a field trip for the second year straight. And that field trip would be in May. May, and that's a decision that's been made already, and a lot of students are very disappointed and upset. The board has taken a lot of things from us students. They've taken away our smiles. They've taken away, they've taken away our high fives in the hallway, our talks at the locker. It's taken away a lot of stuff from us that makes us upset, and now we've taken away what makes our eighth grade year great, and that takes away happiness from a lot of the eighth grade students. I'm asking this board to try and try to do this DC trip. I understand you said a day trip, but a day trip is not as memorable as any of these other trips. I've done a day trip in first to fifth grade. They're day trips. I remember Camp Fairview, which is no longer, it's a day trip again now. I remember that, but I don't remember these day trips. They're not something I'm going to look upon and say. I've talked to kids, and one thing I wanted to say, that one of them said, is someone I know told me, this is something, they texted me, they said, I said, what would you tell the board about the DC trip? And they said, they said that taking away this DC trip is taking away a dream, a dream that they have had ever since they heard about the DC trip in eighth grade, and that's something they wanted to do, an experience they wanted to have, and that's been taken away from us. May, May is a long time from now, and stuff can happen between now and May, especially considering how things are now, and it's just very, very saddening, and I think we can do a DC trip properly, considering colleges, since not all colleges require vaccines, they could figure out dorms, we could figure out hotel rooms in DC and have a proper, fun trip. So it's just something I want you guys to maybe discuss and put into your thought to maybe figure out a way to do a DC trip. Thank you.
Think that young man deserves extra credit?
I don't have my mic on. I said, Nicholas, are you class president yet?
Almost.
Almost, okay. Well, I'm rooting for you. Go ahead, sir.
All right, Norman Robertson, Leavenburg Lane. When some of the people decided to change things in the school system, the first thing that was done was the hiring of a trainer. The trainer spoke the language of postmodern critical theory. First thing the trainer did, or one of them, was to encourage the rewriting of the school's mission statement. I mention this even though it's an old issue, because some of my neighbors may not be aware. Now, a lot of people aren't aware of what the former mission statement was. It was pretty succinct and direct, and it said, quote, "to create a district-wide climate and culture that remains mindful that the students are always first." And then it goes on to say how. And then the core values were listed: respect, individuality, responsibility, citizenship, and teamwork. The school system also did a survey, to its credit, did a survey of the community. One of the top things that was mentioned positively was the core value of individual responsibility. After all, that's how we try to raise our children. So you would think that those values would have been included in the new mission statement, but they weren't. Respect was out, individuality was out, responsibility was out, citizenship was out, teamwork was out. And I will mention that those decisions were very consistent with critical theory. And sadly, most sadly, so was the commitment to a climate and culture that remains mindful that the students are always first. In its place wound up a collection of politically correct words and phrases that are frequently found in critiques of radical left critical theorists. It's right out of the playbook. And who was it that wrote the new- And who is it that wrote the new mission statement, that actually drafted it? Well, if I look at your press release, it says the mission statement was developed and written by a diverse community of stakeholders from the elementary, middle, and high schools, which sounds good, except it's not true. There were 14 members of that committee, 13 of whom run the district's payroll as professional educators, which is fine, they are a stakeholder, but so are parents, so are taxpayers, so are seniors, so are veterans. Ms. Reese also provided the background and inspiration for the committee members, your statement says. The problem with the committee is that there was one designated parent representative, but even the parent representative there was someone who was superintendent of schools in another district. I can understand why parents thought that the deck was stacked, they didn't have a seat at the table. Then when you look at the summer book clubs on civil rights, Vietnam, How to Be an Activist, the picture becomes even more clear. In fact, it gives every appearance that the specific trainer was hired for the express purpose of bringing about this specific outcome. And the development of curricula is next. Is that three? Thank you.
Pardon? It was me. We're not going to play this game. Is there anyone else wishing to come to the podium before Mr. Robertson has something else to say? Thank you very much.
Hello. Brittany Coral, 36 Lawrence Road. I actually just wanted to play a clip from a man named Dr. John McDonald. He's a psychiatrist. He had this to say regarding mandatory mask-wearing of children in schools. I'm just going to try and play it.
I treat children all day long, and I can tell you unequivocally.
Pam, we don't allow presentations from the public. If you can speak to the issue, go right ahead.
Sure. He said he's never seen as many children in his office as ever, ever, he's never seen this many children in his office as he has now with such severe psychiatric issues. And you may think I'm overstating this, but I'm not. One of his patients came in as an eight-year-old with his mother, both wearing masks, and he said, you guys can take your masks off, it's okay, this is a safe place, it's all right. The mother, to her credit, did take her mask off. The son refused, and he said, you know, it is okay for you. And he said, I'm not going to take it off. And he said, well, tell me why you don't want to take it off. And he said, because if I do, I could get you sick and you might die. And then he looked at his mother and he said, and I might kill my mother too. Now, I don't know about you guys, but I'm concerned if a kid has that kind of thinking with regard to a mask. There's a constant installation of fear, obviously. These kids are told that they're going to get their friends sick, their grandparents sick, their parents sick. I just, does everyone okay with that? I just, I'm shocked, shocked that everybody just thinks that there's going to be no long-term effects on these kids. Everybody loves to say kids are resilient, they get used to it. Yeah, they get used to it. And then this trauma goes deep into their subconscious, deep in their brains, and it bends itself, and it manifests itself later in their adult years, and they become dysfunctional, messed-up adults. That's the way trauma works. That's all I have to say. I really think it would be better if we could just play what the psychiatrist had to say. He said it a lot better than me, so I was not well-prepared to say it, but since you won't allow it, maybe I'll come back again and speak. Thanks.
Hi. Maria De Luca Pranzo, Wayne, New Jersey. I just wanted to say I thought Nicholas's comment was very, you know, well-thought-out, a very, you know, I appreciate that he's advocating for his class. I just want to mention that if we are going to consider, you know, reinstating the class trip, and I think that's certainly something that should be considered, just please keep in mind that there were two other classes that also did not have an eighth-grade class trip to Washington. And if, you know, there's an opportunity for those classes who are now, what, sophomores and freshmen, that we should consider that as part of the package. So, thanks.
Seeing no one else come to the podium, Madam President, I would ask that the session for public speaking be over. Thank you.
Madam President, seeing that there's no new members coming to the podium. Tori Esposito, Woodlot Road. Can we please have a source of where you're getting the information? If you leave this state, you need to quarantine if you're unvaccinated. It's not on the CDC site. No other district is following this locally, so can you please tell, instead of sending that, put a source on that as well? Well, I could tell my kids that they can go to Giant Stadium with 80,000 people, but they can't, but we can't spend the night in another state to go see their grandparents in Florida. So can we please confirm that? Thank you.
All right, Nicholas, give me one second there, pal. Seeing no new members to the podium, I make a motion to close public session with the exception of the previous members that spoke.
Second.
Roll call? Roll call? We have a motion on the floor, sir. Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Bubba? Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlik?
Yes.
Mrs. Puttup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
No. I'm a reactionary speaker, and if someone would like to speak after they hear this, then they should be able to.
Mrs. Albanese?
No. If public is open, it's open to everybody.
Mrs. Kazan?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So back on to DC, you already know my name. DC is definitely something important, and I think maybe, just maybe, I don't know, is the decision definite that we're not going, or is there any way we can go? If you can answer that later. But if there is, I think we should put together something. But I've talked to some students, and what they, what they said is, they said that this is something I think that is terrible, but it's not your fault, some parents. There's students that would love to come here, speak, that they can't go to DC, but their parents say, say no, they can't, and that because they're scared that some, they might be talked about by a teacher that might be scared of COVID the wrong way, which I think is, it's a little messed up. But one thing, when I made my comments at the last meeting about what I was told by a teacher and I was given no mask break, that was handled, so thank you, that was handled by my school principal, and I don't know what came of it, but it was handled, like. And the masks, the, when you said that you don't want one child to die and you wouldn't ask a governor to do that, the only problem I have with that is that the only children have died of anything is suicide from this situation. No children have died from COVID-19 in the state of New Jersey, and that you could research that. And it is a fact. And I think it's a little selfish for people like Eda Ferrante, president of a union, to come up here and talk about how they need masks for the teachers and endanger my health so them with a vaccine that they think works so well that, so they could be protected from something that they think they're protected from and endanger my own health for that, mental and physical? That doesn't make sense. Then, then, the only other thing I gotta say is, us students, we don't have a union, we don't have lawyers and bosses to threaten a board with money. So that's the only reason I come to these meetings and say stuff like this, but as I could tell, the only thing that is listened to is the ones with money, and that's how things work. And it's kind of sad because America's supposed to be about how our voices are heard, but that's pretty clear.
Can't hear him, sir. You're being disruptive and you're taking up his time.
So that's all I have?
Officer, thank you. Go ahead, Nicholas. You might need extra time now.
So I'm just asking if you could, if we all could consider trying to maybe push for a vote to send, try and send a letter again because of the point that it is endangering our mental health as students and that we could have problems with suicide and depression because we do not see smiles and we do not see things that make us happy physically and mentally. And I hope that you consider DC, and that will hopefully be fixed, and we get to go to DC in May or June or whenever you choose a DC trip. It's a DC trip. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Ironically enough, my postscript was going to be to thank Sean Duffy and thank Don Pavlik for what they did to try to undo the three-minute rule. When I was in the Senate and I was on the Judiciary Committee, we, we did hearings on racial profiling, one of the first in the country. There were times when those hearings ran 12 hours, but it was an important issue, and ultimately legislation came out of it. And when people come forward to talk to the board, any board, and they hope to be heard, the board's response shouldn't be, at first by executive authority and then by vote, to cut their speaking time by 40% from five minutes to three minutes. Now, I realize that people can go to the back of the room, they can come up again, and they can speak again, but I got to tell you, that looks terrible. As a former public official myself, that looks terrible. And what really happens is that people are getting the impression they're not being heard, even though they're speaking, that they're talking to themselves, that they're talking among themselves. And it just really is not a good way to do that. Now, the other thing that I was going to say, and it was only about two sentences left, but such is the three-minute rule, I said, remember, I was going to ask people to remember, ask you to remember, that there are a lot of people in Wayne who still very much believe that the students always come first and that they are our children, and their welfare comes before your politics or the politics of any training. And their parents, their parents will fight for them. You need to start all over again with respect to the mission statement and with a committee that is, in fact, diverse. Thanks.
That ends public portion by a vote of the board. Do you care to comment on anything, Dr. Tobek?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so I'd like to respond to, I guess there's a number of questions and concerns out there, so we try to answer everybody's questions. And so let's get started. So first of all, let's talk, so Nicholas, your concern, you came up twice to talk about the issue of the Washington, DC trip, and in fact, you expressed concerns of some of your classmates because ultimately it is a big deal, and I used to be a middle school principal, I used to teach in middle school, so we had a Boston trip, a Washington DC trip. I know how important it is to students, and so do all of the principals and the staff members. So we had a situation a few years ago, and we have a situation now that does come down. There is, there is a financial issue, and the financial issue has to do with tour companies not giving money back. In other words, we have attempted to sign contracts, and we have attempted to put together a trip for the students, but unfortunately, the part of it that we feel will be a problem for most parents is, based on what we have at this point, if there was a reason to cancel the trip, parents would not get their money back. And so that's, that's a reason that we think there will be a large number of parents that probably would not want to spend the kind of money that is required to go and do a good trip to Washington. It's about $600, $700. And so the inability to give a refund to parents in the event that we choose to cancel it is something that is a significant issue. So that's really the reason behind it at this point. So we did attempt to put together a trip, but we were unable to find a travel company that would not allow us to get our money back. So you can have insurance, but the insurance does not cover, in a case where either the school cancels the trip because of COVID or there is a COVID-related incident, insurance does not cover that. So that's the, that's the dilemma around the Washington trip. If times change, if things are, if options are available, then certainly we would look at those as soon as we can. It is earlier in the year, I agree with that, but right now, we don't feel that that's a, it's really a viable option to run a full-fledged Washington, DC trip. Okay? So that's that. As far as, I guess, Mrs. Coral, you just had comments.
Mission statement.
Okay. Well, there was no question really necessarily raised about the mission statement. As far as, as far as Mr. Batterstill, okay?
That was the question.
Not back and forth at this time. We don't have a back and forth during this portion. If you continue to have concerns, you can always send an email or write to the board if your question isn't answered this evening. Finish, Dr. Tobek.
Okay. So as far as Mr. Batterstill's comments, I'm happy that the incident that you described was resolved the way it was. However, the other part of it is that there are some, I beg to differ about your account of what took place in Mr. Crowley's actions with regard to his response to something that, I guess it was your wife that posted. And so he discouraged people from posting on social media and to find out factual information first before posting. So no one's trying to stop parents from communicating with one another, but the reality is that if there is misinformation that's communicated, that doesn't help anybody. And so in this particular case, I guess he felt that he needed to simply clarify, not tell people what to do, but to clarify that he's, he's available to parents to respond to questions or to clarify if there's a question about something that's happening in the district. Okay? Mr. Esposito, so you wrote, you raised a question about traveling to Florida, traveling elsewhere, right? And why is there a requirement for quarantine? And so other districts do follow these, these rules. And so if you look for the CDC guidance for schools, if you Google that, you'll certainly find it. If you look for the New Jersey Department of Health, and it's called the Road Forward, there's a document that is distributed to all school districts across the state of New Jersey, and in that guidance, there is, there's requirements for travel. Okay? So not that there is a travel, there's, there's no travel ban in New Jersey, there's none of those things that are actually in place, but there is guidance that says you should follow the CDC guidance. So it's a little confusing, and I understand that, and that's why, listen, it's, it's a lot to understand, and we ourselves sometimes look at this and say, try to make sense of it. Okay? Now, as far as the, as far as Mr. Robertson's comments, so in getting back to the question you asked about the, the mission statement, okay? So yes, there is a mission statement. Yes, it was developed largely by educators, and yes, it was something that was part of a goal two years ago. Okay? So it's something that was developed, and it was something that, but the thing that I'd like to call out, and the thing that concerns me is, I met with Mr. Robertson to talk about the mission statement, and I spent a lot of time asking him the very same question that I'm going to ask. What is the issue with the mission statement? He was unable to answer that question despite the fact that I asked him over and over and over again, what is your issue? What is the concerns you have about the mission statement? So he alluded to the fact that there's, he's concerned about postmodernist thinking and that that is something that is being connected to the school system. So that is, that is my statement about the mission statement. If the board, I mean, any time, the board could certainly revise a mission statement. You could look at a mission statement, you can, you know, it's something that could be done all the time, but generally speaking, a mission statement is something that you set aside. It's, and again, I encourage all of you to look at the mission statement and to point out, okay? I guess the idea behind the new mission statement is that it, it basically communicates the idea that the district is maybe a little more inclusive. So that's the general idea behind it. So if you wanted to summarize it. The other thing, so we have Mr. Robertson. Ms. Coral, you're, you're, you basically, you made comments, there was no questions. So I think that's it. That concludes my, my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Tobek. Anyone else have any closing comments? Older, new business? Mrs. Kumar?
I just wanted to say it's really a testament to our district that a lot of our former students are now substitutes in the district. I saw a lot of my former students, now they're going to be subs in districts, so I thought that, like, is just a testament to how people want to come back and give back, and also therapy dogs are always a good thing, so.
Mr. Pavlik?
Just a couple things that I think that, just a couple things that I believe that the community, we really need to, and the board and everyone really need to start thinking about. Our governor this week just... Our governor this week just stated that, or last week, that he's implementing mandatory pre-K. I think it's a great idea. Here's the problem. Dr. Toback gave the numbers we have in our buildings. We don't have the space in any school. Our schools are busting at the seams in a lot of places. So it's great that the governor wants to give us pre-K, but how about he sit down with us and say, do you have the ability to deliver it? Or we're going to be coming, asking the public, probably for about a $40, $50 million referendum to put additions on schools. That's what's going to come. That's why, that's why conversation has to start now. Because if this is going to be mandated in another year or two or whenever, and again, another unfunded mandate from the state, where are we going to do it? The other, the second problem we have, that really is part of the first problem. Our demographic studies should be coming back shortly, I hope, but when the builders of these low-income housing developments in Wayne that are coming, and they're coming, there's no doubt, there's not any ifs or maybes, they're coming. We need to start looking at the populations that we have now in our buildings. Because if we get 1,000, 2,000 new students, we again have the same issue that we have with pre-K. We don't have places to put them. Nicholas will tell you, his school's probably full. All right? Dr. Toback gave you the numbers. The only way you're going to do it without putting on additions in building is to have class sizes of 30 or 35 kids. That's going to be the only way. I'd never support that. And you would never support that as a community. So I think we need to start having this conversation real soon. Because if we're going to do anything, everybody says, oh, the building's not coming for another three, four years. You know what it's like to get plans through the Department of Ed? It's going to take you two years just to get them to sign off on them. That's if they're good. If they have any issues, now we're going back to the drawing board again. The DOE does nothing quick, as we all know. So we really, I believe, need to have, to start this conversation right now. Because you can't kick the can down the road for three or four years. It's going to be too late. And our kids are going to suffer because you're going to have class sizes, and I'm telling you now, it's the only way you can do it is to increase your class sizes. So we really need to have a strong, hard look at facilities, looking at the potential of the pre-K, how many more students is that going to bring in? Because you have to remember, you can't just put kids in anything. You can't buy, somebody said to me, oh, go buy one of these buildings that's for sale. It's not that easy. In elementary school, you have to have a classroom, you have to have certain things in the room. Somebody said, use pregnant school again. Yeah, but it all has to be renovated. It's not ADHD compliant. So you, there's a lot of issues out here right now that are going to affect the taxpayer, a lot. And we need to start having this conversation now. And Nicholas, yes, I do hope we can do a DC trip, but what Dr. Toback said is 100% true. And I can tell you, two years ago, this board put out money to parents because the insurance didn't cover it, when COVID first began, the insurance didn't cover it, and the tour company would not pay them back. And we ended up paying them back. So I hope we can do it. Thank you.
Mrs. Albanese.
I just wanted to add to some of what Mr. Pavlek spoke about tonight, some of which was on my list to speak about. But we did get a figure from facilities for the discussion of air conditioning, some were $60 to $75 million. That can't be the end of that discussion. We have older buildings, large facilities, air handling issues, windows that aren't providing ventilation. So in addition to some of the financial things that Mr. Pavlek spoke about, Dr. Toback spoke about, we also have to start somewhere. We have to start doing that long-range planning, financial and facility, to start looking at where we can start. We're going to have more students in our buildings. Our buildings are not getting younger, they're just continuing to age. Temperatures are rising, children are in school with staff members in very, very warm conditions. We have to start planning for how we're going to take a very expensive project, break it down, but how we're going to make a start on making some of those changes and putting some air conditioning into our buildings where there isn't any at the moment. So it's a lot of planning, looking down the road, but things that we need to start looking at now to get into the buildings in the next few years. Thank you.
Mrs. Sher.
I just wanted to say, Nicholas, you get up here a lot and speak, and I applaud you for that, because there are many adults that will not speak in public. So for you to be able to do it at your age is great. What I will tell you is that when this all started, my daughter was the first year that they did not go to DC. And I saw the anxiety that it caused for all of her friends. It is something that you look forward to from the moment you get into middle school, right? You hear about it, you get excited. My son also didn't have a prom, he barely had a graduation. Unfortunately, children have suffered dramatically from this, along with adults, but we're here to discuss the children. So we know this, and I can tell you that the board will, or I'm not talking for the board, myself, I will keep on administration. I understand why they made that decision right now, because two years ago, it was a big ordeal paying, you know, not everybody has $600 to put aside for a Washington trip, unfortunately. I know that I didn't just have it. You know, it's rough. And to not get that money back is very difficult, too. Knowing that your child's sitting here crying because they can't go on the trip and you're out $600. So we will definitely keep looking into it. After what happened two years ago, I'm sure a lot of the companies are very hesitant in saying, let me plan this big trip, knowing that you're going to ask me for your money back. So we will definitely, I can tell you that we will definitely keep looking into it. May is a long time away. Things can always be planned last minute. So let's keep our fingers crossed and we will definitely keep trying. As far as Brittany, I also did hear the same thing you did. And I'm a teacher, I am seeing the psychological effects that this pandemic is, on adults, first of all, but on the children. I go to school every day in this mask, walking up three flights of stairs and in humidity with barely any air conditioning. It's rough. I'm not going to lie, it's rough. But unfortunately, what we're forgetting is it's not the board that's making you wear this mask. It's really not. It's the governor. And we all have to follow the governor's rules, unfortunately. That's life, you know? You're given rules and you have to follow them. There's nobody here that wants to be in a mask all day. The children, anybody. You don't want to, but if it's, realistically, if it's going to help save one child, then that's what we have to think about. Whether you believe in the mask or not, I'm not even asking that because I can't give you a solid answer myself. But the governor tells us to do it. We don't want to lose state funding. We don't want any of our teachers or administrators to lose their certification over it, that's not worth it. What I will tell you is I have a child who's back in school. She's very happy to be back in school. She's happy to see her friends every day. Is this a nuisance? Yeah, so is homework. So is a lot of things. You know? So unfortunately, we're just going to have to stick with it for now. And what I encourage is talking to your children. Because I don't think that some parents are realizing fully the psychological effect that this past year has had on kids. And I could tell you as someone who is in a school every day, talk to your kids. Because there's a lot going on there that they might not be saying. And, you know, not everybody gets to go to therapy and talk about it. So you're their outlet, just be their outlet and be there for them. That's all we can do right now. Thank you.
Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, 13 hours of this. Okay. I just wanted to piggyback on to Ms. Albanese, and I wanted a clarification on what they're asking for. They're saying the words "air conditioning." I want to be perfectly clear, this is something that's been going on for many years, and we've all got the statement of, I was in school and it was 95 degrees in that room and I still learned, and why are we even going to make these kids have air conditioning? We're not asking for air conditioning. We're asking for HVAC. And the second letter in that is the one that's everything. It's heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. And I think us sitting here with these things, ventilation is all-important. I'll tell you right now, as a person who's been handling ventilation, I'm a school teacher, been handling ventilation in my district, there are two generations of ventilators out there. One was made in the 1920s and one was made in the 1960s, and neither one of them can handle a MERV-17 filter without catching on fire. This is something that we have to look at right now. We've made the mistake over the years of kicking the can down the street. And it's not the superintendent's fault, it's not even the Board of Education's fault from 10, 20, 30 years ago. We didn't think about this. Now we've hit a point where Mother Nature has said, hi, I'm here, this is a problem. We're going to have to really start sitting down as a community and talking to each other. And when you're going to get a naysayer who says, I was back and the room is hot, so what, we don't care, it's not air conditioning we're talking about. It is HVAC. If you went to a room that didn't have heating, there's laws about that. Certain temperature rooms must be here, can't be occupied. Ventilation is coming along those same lines. COVID's not the last time this is going to happen, ladies and gentlemen. And quite frankly, from a science standpoint, I'm a science teacher, we've gotten really lucky. COVID has a mortality rate of 4.5% on average, the data's holding it out. There are diseases out there that have come out, H1N1, SARS-9, West Nile, bird flu. H1N1's got a 45% mortality rate. This is a picnic compared to this stuff. We've got to start looking at this stuff coming down the road. Don't brush it off because it's talking about air conditioning, it's not air conditioning. It is ventilation, and we talk about, this is the cheapest, easiest ventilator we have, and we solve the problems of that. We can get rid of these things if we've got ventilators that will really work. And it's going to take a top-down, that's why it's going to be $60 to $70 million. I'm not going to slap the thing on the wall and say, it's good here. They got to pull down to the studs and start all over again. We got brand-new boilers with brand-new filters on to make sure that they're heated and that laws obeyed there. When we put these ventilators in, they're going to have to have big machines in the basement also with filters that are changed and maintenance that's going to be done on them. And it's not going to be one building, it's going to be 13 buildings. This is something we really have to get our brains wrapped around and say, it's not because the teachers are hot, it's not because your kid's sweating or they're passing out, they're all horrible things, and I'm not saying that's not the problem, but that's not what we're addressing here. So be careful when people say "air conditioning," it's not air conditioning, it's HVAC, and that's a big, different ballgame. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I just wanted to address a couple of things. We'll look into it, Nicholas, but can't make any promises at this point, because we did go through this two years ago, and it was a debacle of epic proportions with parents and money, and it really required meetings and meetings and meetings and lawyers, as you mentioned. And we don't want to go through that again, although we do also want to give you the trip. But until we have this pandemic under control, we can't make any promises. The hotels don't want to offer refunds, they're not interested in us making these plans far enough in advance. I mean, it would be nice to think that May will be all clear, but we can't guarantee that. Mr. Batterhill, I'm not sure if I'm saying your name correctly. I'm glad your issues were resolved. I would like to talk to you after the meeting, so if you don't mind, stick around about this Facebook issue. But I will say that Facebook is not a place to get information. I've said it before, I'll say it again. We have administrators, teachers, people in our buildings to answer your questions. And if you need information, just ask. We'll be happy to give you the facts. I think we have one of the best websites around when it comes to FAQs and information about everything we're doing right now, including the quarantining, the travel, the vaccinated, unvaccinated, the Road Forward plan, everything is up there at your fingertips, curriculum, you name it. Mr. Robertson, we're always available. Three minutes, you get more than three minutes. You had a private audience with the superintendent. I mean, not everybody needs to come to a meeting to reach out to us. We don't turn into pumpkins when I bang the gavel at the end of this meeting. I answer emails, I even take phone calls. If you get an email from me, my cell phone number's at the bottom of it. Call me. I take phone calls. I'm not hiding. None of us are. I run into people in the community. We're here for you. We don't turn off when the meeting is over. What else? I think the other questions were answered. And on a final note, I've mentioned this in the past, I represent the New Jersey School Boards Association, 40th District, on the State Legislative Committee. So I have access to everything that's going on in Trenton, we discuss it. And last Saturday morning, I sat in a meeting along with 40 other members of the School Board Association throughout the state, and we listened to the deputy chief of staff of the governor talk to us about a myriad of things. Specifically, the one you're interested in would be masks. And this is what she said on his behalf. He's well aware that you don't want to wear them. He's well aware that nobody wants to wear them. However, he's not yet ready to make the decision to remove the mandate. He did say currently, there's probably nobody more than him that wants to remove the mandate, because this is a huge distraction to other things that are going on in the state of New Jersey that he would love to focus on. And he, she ended by saying that if any, because he thinks it'll stall the process for people who want to have choice or parent letters or any other such opt-out, that the consequences would be swift and firm. Because in his opinion, if we do that, it'll take even longer for that mask mandate to go away. So he would appreciate everyone's patience on it, and that's where we ended that discussion. The other things that came up were boring and I won't take up your time, about busing and removing roadblocks and things of that nature to try to get us drivers. I mean, that's just business that the district has to deal with and we have to deal with, and we will. As far as the pre-K, I'm not sure even when that's going to kick in, but we'll certainly look into it because they are supposed to pay for anything they mandate, but we'll see. We'll see how that works out. I'm not sure if we have to comply every district in the state of New Jersey, but I'm sure there'll be more to come on that. We don't get 100% information when the bell is rung on legislation, that's for sure. The wheels turn slowly. But anyway, again, we're available, we hear you, the governor hears you, and we'll continue and try to keep our kids safe in the schools. Thank you. Move to close?
Motion.
Mrs. Duffy, Mrs. Kumar. Thank you.